Good evening, I call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, October 3rd, 2013, at 7:02. Those who would please join us in the prayer and the pledge.
Please bow. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you created for us. Father, we thank you for your many blessings of life. Father, we ask that you would guide these men and women as they undertake the city's business, Father, that their decisions will be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to add two things if I could please. Under 7D, the dissolution and removal of the ordinance 802 that's been under consideration. Under G and item H, discuss and undertake action on future employment of the city manager.
We have an addition of 7D. What are the wishes of the board?
Who's to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8H, what are the wishes of the board for additions?
Who's for approval? Second.
First, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other additions or subtractions? Amendments from staff? Agenda approved, item number three, citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Item number four is awards and recognition.
Mayor, no staff awards or recognitions tonight?
At this time, I would like to recognize the three principals, four principals, sorry, Ms. Garcia, the four principals from our wonderful Fairview Public Schools. We have Westwood Elementary represented by Ms. Garcia. We have Fairview Elementary represented by Ms. Tidwell. Fairview Middle School. Fairview High School. Would one of you like to make a statement of recognition or comment? Welcome.
Thank you. We are just here as principals just to say thank you to this board. We're so excited about the generosity that you showed to our students last year and what the funding that you've approved for the students this year. So, just on behalf of all the kids of Fairview, thank you so much for your support and we just want to let you know that the money that you're entrusting us with will be very well used. And I'm just speaking on behalf of all the principals to say a great big thank you to you for just everything that you're doing for the Fairview schools.
I'd like to say thank you to all four of you as well as your staff as you take care of our children that we entrust with you, and thank you for your dedicated hard work. Thanks. Would there be any other awards or recognitions at this time from the board?
I would like to ask them to stare around. Grab him at the door. Can he just come on back? There's a couple things we'd like to do in just a few minutes, if that's okay.
Needed to leave. Ms. Oryer needed to leave.
Okay.
Can we do it now?
Can you ask for a brief recess?
Okay.
If we can do that.
Motion for recess?
Motion for recess.
Those in favor?
Thank you, Mayor, for recess.
Put in our dedicated staff at all the schools. Item number five is public announcements.
Mayor, just like to remind everyone of the admissions testing on Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 to noon at the Highway 96 Fire Station. Been a little slow on Mondays, but I'm sure it's starting to pick up and I'm sure that everyone appreciates the fact that they're out here two days a week now.
Thank you. Any others from the board? Next item is the approval of the minutes, the minutes for the September 5th, 2013 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, old business, second and final reading on Bill 2013-19.
In order for the amendment of the City Fairview Tennessee Budget for 2013-14 Budget. Who's for approval?
Second.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7B is discuss and undertake action on the community garden and reforestation project with Bowie Park. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to do is bring, we all heard the great presentation that Dr. Oryer did, and they partnered with the Friends of the Park, and I know Mr. Powell, starring, had a lot to do with it, and they already have a group together and met with the teachers and staff. And then another project that we have spent a lot of time talking about on the park board for, oh, probably over a year, and then we have taken the initiative to speak with the schools and we have them on board is the community garden. And we have the teachers that have visions on what they could do with the community garden. We have volunteers that have dedicated time and to the community garden. So, I think these are great partnerships with the schools, and I would like to kind of bring it up for discussion, and I would like to recommend us give seed money to these programs. And I just wanted to bring it to my fellow commissioners to see their thoughts on the process. Don't have a dollar amount, just something to get them started for they could start this year and in the future they could work on getting possible grants. I know that the community garden had already been partnered with the school. They've already done a lot of the homework, met with the attorneys, so they're ready to move forward and they just need that little help. And so, I wanted to bring it to the Board of Commissioners.
Well, I agree, the community garden is a great idea. It's been kind of the buzz across America. As many people in many communities have taken the leadership roles and talked about healthy living, talked about fresh vegetables. And in being a part of the park board, we did discuss that the schools would be a wonderful place to allow the students as well as the FFA, the gentleman who does the garden, the greenhouses and different types of things. He thought it was wonderful to put into his curriculum. So, those discussions have been made. I believe the city's supporting the project is definitely on the horizon and something that we need to continue talking about. It will be on the agenda of the park board on Monday at 6:00 PM, and some of the master gardeners that have committed to the project, we're inviting and asking them for their guidance and direction. At this point, I'm not real sure of the schools' commitment or willingness to move forward, so I'm not aware of that, but I appreciate you keep bringing it forward.
Well, no, they are committed to moving forward, and so it's just a matter of us. I thought if we could go ahead and take these growth, both programs, give it a little seed money out of the facility tax fund potentially if we wanted to. And I'm not talking, I don't know, it's up to y'all, $5,000, $2,500 each. Just a motion of let's get these programs started, let's help fund it, and then we can see as far as the community members and resources. Anyway, any thoughts?
Have we asked them what they would like to have for seed money?
We have not, well, we've had a dream list and projected costs, what it would take with the first year for community garden. Now, the restoration project, they haven't asked for any, they, you know, they've already partnered and haven't came to us, but I thought what appropriate time when we're talking about potentially starting this one program to fund and give money or to help give seed money for this other program, because I was like most of y'all, really impressed with Dr. Oryer's presentation and the friends and their initiative to get people to commit to the community and also having opportunities for the residents to support the schools and teaching kids that they can have an impact on our community and how they can. So, I really feel like it's just a great opportunity to move forward and say we'll commit some seed money to get these programs off, and of course if they need something more, they could come back. It's just initial funding for they can get started on both of these programs this year without having to wait for grants.
When is the park board meeting?
Monday, 6 o'clock.
And the master gardeners will be there?
Yes, sir.
Can we get in touch with the schools to see if?
We've already been, well, not for a dollar amount, but-
But I'm talking about for them to get together with the master gardeners and put some kind of dollar figure together so we would know a little bit more about what we need and what stages we're going to need it in, and come back to us, and I don't have a problem with, I would, I think we should be a part of that program. But just so we have a figure from them telling us what it is, maybe more, maybe less, I don't know. I don't want to go low if it's going to be more, or I would just like to wait until that point and bring it back next meeting.
Well, and you know, I don't really have a problem with that, but the, one of the things that this would do, we already kind of have a list of what they could need, and it's way more than what we could fund. And I'm not looking for the city to fund these programs. I'm looking for one-time gifts, seed money, and if they needed something more, they could come back, or they could, you know, apply for grants. But I do, I am looking, I would love to see us partner with these programs and do whatever we can to assist them through the years, but the schools, they, I mean, they've done a lot of legwork in this. And so, anyway, that's just my thought. But if y'all want to wait till the next meeting, one of my thought processes, because I knew it was on the agenda for the park board, and one of the reasons I brought it forth is they would be ready to go. Like, once we meet on Monday and we get the commitments, we already had the initial, there's been several meetings with the community garden. So, once they can finally just move forward. And so, if we have to wait, have them do a wish list, I can guarantee you the initial start, they're going to need, you know, a lot more than what we're going to probably fund unless y'all have a different direction. But I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, and then, like I said, I wanted them to be able to use the students and go ahead and get to work, because I mean, there's not just the, you know, the agricultural aspect, there's, you know, the carpentry, you know, the shop kids can help build, and they're going to need money for the wood and supplies. You could do a greenhouse. I mean, so that's my thought process.
Do you have an amount in mind?
Well, I thought I would bring it up to y'all. I mean, five, $10,000, split between the two groups, because they're different projects. That's where I was thinking. But, I mean, we could do a big list, and you know, if we want to get it all, that's up to y'all.
And we can pay for that out of the school thing, the same thing we're paying for the other out of?
I mean, to my knowledge, if we're able to do, it would be actual-
You would be giving it to the school and not to individuals, is that what I'm understanding?
Right.
If it's to forward something in the school, that's an approved program in the school, you could take it from that, yes.
Not 100%, I'd just like to have some kind of figure for us to look at, whether we're going to sit back and say we'll do 10%, 20%, 50%, all of it, whatever it amounts to. But just to have a figure to look at. I don't want to come in and say, here's $5,000, it's going to be $50,000.
Well, it's going to be way more than $5,000. I mean, and that's up to the rest of the boards. I mean, I'm just thinking seed money to get them started. That's, you know, all I was thinking.
Mayor, if I might-
Go make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Monday night at the tree board meeting, Mike Berkeley with Grow Wild made it clear that he was taking care of everything to get the reforestation project started, to get all the seedlings growing. And also in that meeting, Debbie Rainey made everyone aware that they were, the school was getting a free greenhouse donated.
Okay.
So, I almost think that we need to see what their immediate needs are before we just start pouring money into it, because they're getting stuff all the time. And another thought process there with that is, the county has told us over the years, they will do any project with us that we want to do if we'll put half the skin in the game. If we're going to make a donation, the county should match this to get this going. And I don't mean the school system, I mean the county government.
Well, actually, the county is giving their property and the resources of their, I mean, they're allowing, and we looked at several different locations when we started first talking of the community garden. And so, actually, we looked into our park systems, what would be a great, you know, location. So, then after a meeting, we all got together as a board and we talked about potential, potentially, maybe we should go to the schools and ask them if they would be willing to partner, and they were. And they went into the, and this was last year of May, they went into the legality of with, you know, what would be their responsibility. I mean, there's more work to be done. I just think that to commit a small amount to get the program started, we could always come back, but just for the, they can move forward this year. But if y'all need more information, that's up to you. But, I mean, the research and the legwork's already been done on a lot of these projects. Now, the restoration that, you know, they just presented the program to us as, you know, and wanted us to partner using the parks and stuff. They haven't asked for money, but I'm thinking both programs are wonderful opportunities to partner with the schools. And, you know, that's what the counties, you know, they're for partnership with communities. And so, anyway, I make a motion that we give $5,000 for seed money for both of the projects, the community garden and the restoration seed, tree program.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who is going to be in charge of the money and whom are we giving it to? Are we giving it to the high school principal?
It would go to the principal to be split between the programs. Like, any time money spends, is spent in the school, they have to, you know, they're going to have to put a want list, and they're going to have to, you know, approve the expenditure once we donate it.
Are we going to do anything to require that we know that the money went to those projects and didn't go to another?
Sure.
Do I?
Sure, I mean-
Yes, sir.
I am, I am prepared to vote for this, because I believe sometimes you can talk a project to death and lose the momentum. But, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Sutton and Vice Mayor Johnson, that before we would want to spend any more money, we would need to have an accounting of what this money went to and a more itemized list. But I'm prepared to vote for it tonight, because I just believe you can, you can talk yourself to death and lose the momentum around something. If they're ready to go, we need to support that. And since we have money in that fund without further reducing our general fund, I don't, I don't have any issue there. So, that's my thoughts on it.
Whomever has the copy of the wish list, can they provide it to all of us?
Yep.
With a dollar figure, if possible. I think you said it already had the dollar figure.
Yeah, well, we have the list, wish list and estimate of what each project was, but, you know, Commissioner Johnson, I don't know if you remember, but you came, we had a meeting right after about, I guess in May, and that was the meeting where we made a list and we talked about the community garden with some other people out there. And it's a generalized, this is what we need for the first year, you know, this is where we need to be. And so, it's not, we can get a dollar amount. I'll be happy, and I'm sure they would be glad if we wanted to give money. And I don't want to sell any program short. I just felt like if we made that first step of, you know, here, get started and let us know, because the project has been talked about for a year, you know, and we got the people on-
I think we're ready to move forward with it.
What now?
I think we're ready to move forward with it.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, answering that question.
I would have a question, Mr. Cantrell, about the agreement. Wondering, is there, is there any limitations in the agreement of what we can and can't? Because if it's going towards the schools, if it's improvement towards the schools, is there any clarification to make sure that, I mean, all is just, and I'm very favorable of the project, but is there anything in the agreement that would put us where, as we have to ask the county now for the exception for the library?
No, excuse me, no. The reason you have to ask for it on the library, and there's, I have some reservations about whether you had to or not on the library, but I think it's, it's good to do that in that the county would be the only one that could, could raise the issue. But, the, excuse me, the city, in the use of the adequate facilities funds, have some leeway that the county doesn't have. The county is restricted by state statute to only use it for, for expansion of a school purpose. That could be, that's up to them to determine what expansion of the school purpose is. Obviously, building a school is an expansion of the school purpose, but I think they could give money out of their funds for something for the school. The cities have a little bit more flexibility than that in that you're limited to school purposes or any public purpose. And I think the library was probably a broad enough public purpose that you could probably have not gotten the county's permission or an addendum to the agreement so stating that they agree that you could do this. I think it's good to do that, because this is going to be, the library expansion is going to be a joint effort between the city and the county, and the last thing you need to be doing is having the two entities squabble over the funds. So, I'm all in favor of that, but I think that's the reason I asked the question of Commissioner Carroll, if this would be going to the school. If the money is going to the school, it's going to the principal to be distributed down and used in the classes, that is a school purpose, and I don't think you've got to have anybody else's permission for that. The library, probably, and I think with the circumstances surrounding it, with everybody behind it, I think the agreement of the county for the city to expend an agreed amount, whatever that may be, was good, because everybody's on board with the same thing. You can never be wrong by having somebody's permission to do something, whether you needed it or not. But you wouldn't need it for this, for this purpose, because it clearly, if it's going to the school for the furtherance of a class, that's a school purpose.
And I don't, I mean, they can send us a list, we can ask them for a list of where the money was spent, you know, itemized list. That sounds good to me.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, you, yes, I'm sorry.
Any opposed?
I just wanted to point out that that will require a budget amendment before we can cut the check. That's it.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you, appreciate that. 7C, discuss and undertake on Fairview City Projects. Project Manager Kevin Hossinger.
Good evening. Regretfully, this will be my last presentation of the projects list. It's been a quick 12 months. Never could have guessed my house would have a contract in three days.
Wow.
So, it sounds like Fairview's growing. So, we'll start off under the Parks and Greenways. City Center Greenway Project, it's currently in the bid process, and that's, that's the current status on there. Bowie Lake Road, contractors are out today, I don't know if you got to see them, they're actually re-out, doing the ditch lines, establishing the seed for the grass growth, putting down some curlic, some erosion-proof type mitigation, and then reworking the ditch line into the park, accompanying some other punchless items that I and the city engineer, Griggs and Maloney, put together. Lake Van Trail, it's kind of been shelved and tabled for now. Bowie Park Forest Street, we had a meeting with Dwight Barnett with the state, and come to find out, after a few people have reviewed the actual areas of land for the different basil types, we're actually under the acreage that we originally requested, and the basils were not laid out properly. And so, we're still in the process between him and Mike Berkeley to get the right areas laid out. And Keith's actively working on that. And as soon as that's done, we can then get the quotes for that, that portion of work. On, any questions on that? On the Triangle School, I'd like to defer that to Commissioner Assell to give the update on that.
Just a quick update, two items. Dr. Rice and I met last week, and our goal was to develop for the board a definitive action plan that delineated who's doing what, when that's going to be done, and who's going to pay for it. We'll have that project completed and ready for presentation on the 17th, and we'll bring it back, and then we'll be able to look at it in terms of the timeline. The ultimate goal was that in conjunction with next year's Fourth of July celebration, that we would be opening the Triangle School for Walk Through. And the other thing that Dr. Rice was kind enough to open his books and records to me, said I could perform an audit of exactly how much money had been spent on this project by the city. I have heard anything in the five years I've served from, you know, $100,000 to $150,000 that the city has spent. I then met with the Chief Financial Officer and compared Dr. Rice's books to her books. And in reality, though there may have been some money spent to certain vendors on the side, somewhere along the lines, it's just impossible for us to trace, because it didn't have its own line item. We've actually spent $85,000. The agreement that former Mayor Bryson signed for the $20,000 a year for five years was not ever fulfilled on, by either side. We, there is still a $13,000 that we have allocated to the project that will be used on the windows. And if you haven't been by it lately to see the windows, the windows look really good. So, that's, that's money well spent. So, our total commitment at this point is not $150,000. Our total commitment for the city is $98,000. And I thought that was very important, as we talked about when we bring the presentation forward, talked about how much more money we wanted to put toward the items that need to be finished, that we have an accurate total as to what we've put into it so far. So, I'll have more detailed information, and Dr. Rice and I will talk in specific about the particular things. But I feel like it was a very productive meeting, and we'll have for the board to consider a, a action plan that lays it all out and gets the doors open and people listed by next July. Any questions for you guys about that?
Has the threshold to the building been addressed?
No, they have not. They're, we have not addressed that or the parking. We're still, that's part of-
Part of the piece, okay, thank you.
I asked Kevin to kind of just defer everything for a couple weeks and let's get this together. And then, once, once the action plan is finalized and we determine what we want to pay for as the board, then, then the city manager can gole it out to whatever department he feels can fulfill our requirements that we agree to, and Dr. Rice will take care of those that are left.
Do you have in front of you the amount that Dr. Rice has raised from private donations? If not, I know we'll have it at the next meeting.
Dr. Rice, in some total, has spent $143,000. Of that, $143,000, $85,000 of that has come from the city. So, that, that would mean, if my math, math's serving me right, we're talking about $65,000 of private donations that he's raised there. Plus, he has over $35,000 in the bank. So, Dr. Rice has matched, in my opinion, after doing the audit, Dr. Rice has matched with private funds every dime the city has put forward. It's been a 50/50. It's been a fifty-fifty deal to this point in time.
Any further questions on that one? Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Kevin.
No problem.
Thank you.
Bowie Five Year Strategic Plan, that's still in city development. The Highway 96, 100 Roadscapes, still in the NEPA phase, we're pushing consultants. Safe routes to school, it's in our consultant design phase currently. On the MPO, active transportation and surface transportation, I have not heard back from the extension, but I have heard from other people that we weren't the only small municipality that had the same issue, getting approval to get to the construction phase. So hopefully, multiple parties are in the same situation, they'll grant us the extension. As soon as I know something, I'll definitely forward that on or Don will be forwarding that on. Under city staff projects, welcome signs, hopefully you've all been by, Triangle School property and the welcome signs there, it's, I'm calling it a hundred percent. We've got to reestablish seed growth for the grass, but it, it's done.
That's great.
So hopefully, it suits y'all. On city paving, I have some comments there. I know I'm going to have a successor on, and you know, that's going to take over for me. I'm about seventy-five percent with that bid package for the tonnage on the asphalt. I, I would not like to get that ready to submit and get in the paper, just in case if my successor would like to negate all those bids and do it a different way. I would like to save the city's money and let him take that upon himself, possibly his first project and his first responsibility as he takes over. Any questions on that? City Transportation, City Overlay, still development. City Survey, do we have any?
It's online.
So it's, it's still online. Windstream, our phone should be a hundred percent now, as long as with data. Veterans Memorial Park, we're still at fifty percent, we've been working on some other projects. I think you've seen, we reworked the columns for the sign that goes into Bowie Park now and we're going to have a nice decorative stop sign down there as well. And then the last piece we have, I've talked with a local contractor, got a quote for about seventy-three hundred dollars to do the city hall repairs and he gave me a unit cost for above and beyond if he gets us into some additional stuff. And we should see a lift of some sort parked out here by Tuesday of next week, starting on it.
And just a couple of quick things. And we've had a discussion before about this, about the foot bridge over Turnbull Creek. Have we done anything on that?
Yes, actually we have done. Keith and I have reviewed the documents per the land trust. It appears the governing board, which I would assume is y'all, can give us authorization to build that bridge. What I've done is there's a current bridge down there by one of the lakes that's made out of the same telephone poles. I've got a phone call into Middle Tennessee Electric, we're going to need phone poles that are fifty-five to sixty-five feet in length. That's just not your average phone pole you have around here, most of them are thirty-five to forty-five. I'm trying to see if we can get them to either donate or find out what cost would be and if they could get them to us. And then if we can get, city staff can get the poles across the creek and then team up with maybe the Eagle Scouts and let them build the bridge with, with whatever resources they can pull together, but it'd definitely be a great project to do.
Who are you going to turn it up, do we know who you're turning it up?
I'm working with Keith on that. Keith should be able to handle that. But I, I think we've got a really good idea, if we can get the materials, especially if we get them, no charge. But all the free telephone poles that I've got since I've been here are usually thirty-five to forty-five feet length and they're not going to work.
Just clarification, you said he would do his first job. Is there someone been assigned to your job at this point?
No, no, that's actually down into the.
I just heard you say he would do his first job and I thought.
He, she, them.
Okay. Just clarifying.
Any other questions on projects?
If, if I can make one comment, make sure that the poles, whether you buy them or they donate them, because some of those poles may be old poles, if it's going across the creek, make sure the preservative is not criollo or lead arsenate.
Okay.
Because they're environmentally taboo.
I'll, I'll talk with Middle Tennessee on that because I don't know if they're using that in their new stuff or not, but I'll find out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate everything you've done since you've been here.
Item seven D. Dissolve Ordinance Number 802. Commissioner Seton.
Yes, after talking with the coach superintendent and reviewing this ordinance completely, I'm going to let him speak on, on the point just a minute, I am now under the impression that basically what this does is ban all future home-based businesses in the city with the exception of two. Don, I'll let you go ahead and sit up and speak on what, what it actually entails in a brief synopsis if you can.
Table five dash one oh two A in our zoning ordinance sets out uses and activities that are allowed in each zoning district. And under major home occupations and minor home occupations, there's letters there that represent certain things. A C in, in the column would represent that they would have to get a conditional use permit to, to operate that business. And that's under major home occupations. The minor home occupations has an ASP which is, means it's allowed with supplemental provisions. And, and the ordinance as it's written right now, all the way across the board in every zoning district for a major home occupation, there's a C, which means they have to get a conditional use permit through the Board of Zoning Appeals to operate a major home occupation. Minor home occupations has the ASP all the way across for every zoning district, meaning that's, it's allowed with the supplemental provisions that's already written into the ordinance. The ordinance that came through the eight oh two ordinance, in effect, took out the allowance of major home occupation and minor home occupations from RS forty all the way up to an RN twelve zoning, which only left the AR five and AR fifteen as allowable zones for major home occupation.
Can you describe those two?
Minor home occupation. The AR five zone is agriculture residential, five acres or, and then the AR fifteen is agriculture residential, fifteen acre tracts. So anything that's, that would be less than five acre tracts would not be allowed to have a home occupation. Now, the ordinances are written for the major home occupation and the minor home occupations to safeguard property values. Because it's written in there that the, the, the home occupations can't look, they're not, they, they're not allowed to look like commercial businesses.
It's the current ordinance.
The, the current ordinance. So the current, current ordinance is, there's protections in there to protect homeowners and people that, that buy property and expecting their property value to increase instead of decrease because a lot of people think that because you allow home-based businesses that it decreases the value of property. It, it doesn't if they operate according to the zoning ordinances that are written because they can't look like businesses. They still have to look like residents. So the, this issue crept up when the Board of Zone Appeals had a, an item come before them that was wanting to do gun manufacturing in one of our subdivisions. And so the Board of Zone Appeals was not going to approve that conditional use permit because it was a major home occupation and there were some hazardous materials that was, would be on site, which was not allowed by our zoning ordinance. So the Board of Zone Appeals relatively couldn't have approved that application anyway because the ordinance specifically calls out that you can't have that type of business.
So, so in essence, what we're saying is the current ordinance that we have, without changing it to delete all the other base businesses except for those two, is completely controlled and supervised by the board and codes, am I correct?
Yes.
And what we're looking at is to make sure that whatever it is is a minimal footprint on the community that it's in.
Yes.
Whether it be traffic or parking or any of those things, can be disallowing that, that business. So we still have control of that under the current ordinance.
Yes. It, they, both, both major home and the minor home occupations specifically call out that you, you can only use a certain portion of your home as a business and it's only five hundred square foot or twenty-five percent of the, the total square footage of, of the residence. You can't have lighting, you can't have signage that would reflect that you are doing a, a business there. And so if people do those things, then they're in violation of the ordinance and they would get a letter from code stating that they're in violation of the ordinance. And as long as they took care of the violation, you know, most people do not know that there's actually a, a business being operated beside them.
I'd like to make a motion to cancel any further action on ordinance eight oh two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we not want to review, why was it initially given to planning commission? Did we assign this? We did.
It came through the, through the planning commission back to us.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure we addressed any concerns online.
It's, it's okay. Clarification on it, I went through Don and I think several of us have looked at it too. It, it's just ludicrous for us to say we're going to do away with all home businesses in the city fair.
That's not, and never was the intent.
Not a single person on this board knew.
And that's the reason that it should be dissolved at this time. And so that's, that's.
Yes, sir.
What's confusing to me is how, is how we group selling Avon with selling guns. It, it, it's, it seems to me that, that our ordinance needs to be flexible enough that we can approve selling Avon for somebody that's, that's doing it out of their home, you know, as long as they don't put a neon Avon sign in the middle of the subdivision and we can still have the teeth to stop the, the manufacturer of, of something that we think would be hazardous and/or call too much attention to it. And as I read the old ordinance, I, I didn't, I didn't think that the solution to the problem was to change in such a manner that it causes, that excludes everything. I, I think that we can use our judgment and can continue with the current process until we see that it's not working. It worked like we all wanted it to work with the guns and it's worked like we wanted it to work with folks that have opened up hair salons or it's, it's, it's working fine. So I, I just don't see the need to go to the absolute. So I, I, I would agree that now would be the time to stop the whole process.
Yes, sir.
On the, the seventeenth meeting, you also have an ordinance, that's ordinance eight oh three, and it deals with the minor home occupations. And in that list, it gives you a list of businesses that are considered major home occupations. So when you look at that ordinance, you may want to maybe look at the major home occupations and do the same thing with major home occupations that you've done with minor home occupations and put businesses in there that's not allowed at all in a, in a residential area, like the gun manufacturer.
And that's coming up on the seventeenth.
Yes.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I'd just like to apologize to the public for that getting out there and it causing some disheartening over the last couple of days, so just let you know we are taking care of it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One other thing with that, Mayor, now that it's passed, by implication, you've also called back or repealed the public hearing for that night on that ordinance.
Yes.
Just wanted to get that on the record, that would be done by implication.
Thank you. Moving on.
Motion passed.
Yes. Eight A, discuss enter take action on Addendum A to the interlocal of the joint participation in the funding of future school facilities by use of receipts received from the adequate school facility tax. City Attorney Cantrell.
Thank you, Mayor. That basically is a, the addendum is to the use of facilities tax, the county and has agreed, or is in agreement with this. They haven't passed it yet. Their meeting is later this month, I'm thinking the week of the thirteenth. In speaking with the county attorney, I've reviewed this, this document and I think it does what we, what the city wants to do. It just says, it basically that the city is authorized to use adequate facilities funds in the joint venture with the county to expand the library and it doesn't obligate you to any amount, it says an amount to be agreed upon. Previously, the board has passed a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute this, once you approve it. And I would ask that the board approve this so that we can get it signed off on, I'll return it to the county attorney and they can get it before their board.
For the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight B. Discuss enter take action on Resolution nineteen dash thirteen.
It's a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Fairview, Tennessee to execute an interlocal agreement for automatic responsive fire, rescue and EMS services within Williamson County, with Williamson County.
I'd like to make a motion for deferring this to the safety committee for discussion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, I raised my hand for discussion real quick.
Before, after we voted?
Well, you just moved on, you didn't look at me, so I don't know.
City Attorney? Can we go back to discussion?
If, if the board approves it, you can go back to discussion.
The vote hadn't been recorded.
Okay, vote hadn't been recorded, you can go back to discussion.
Discussion, yes, sir.
Just had a quick question, Larry. Can you just summarize real quick what this, I mean, I thought we already had our agreement with the county about the funding and all of that, what, what is this?
The fire response, what?
Eight B.
Right.
Okay.
Eight B, okay. That, the resolution just, would just authorize the mayor to execute the agreement that's referenced in eight C. And what eight C, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, and eight C is, is putting into words the agreement that the fire department has had with the county for, according to the chief, for years. It doesn't change anything that we're already doing. The ISO just asked that it be put into writing and the county has, has done that and submitted it to us and it would go on the, if it is approved, it would go on the same, on, on the same agenda with the library. We had already previously passed a resolution authorizing approving the library, we have not, this just came up and before the, the mayor could approve that, the document in eight C, we'd have to have the board give the authority to do that. Eight C, I, I've sent this to the chief, fire chief, he's looked it over and he has no problems with it. I have no problem with it legally, but he said operationally and administratively, it just puts into words what they're already doing.
So if, if we send it to the committee, my concern is that by the time it came back before this board again, the county will have already met and we'll lose the opportunity to get it approved. And if it's just a reiteration of something we've been doing for years, I'm not sure what the committee would do with it. Maybe somebody could help me there.
Well, I have, if I might.
Go ahead.
Sure, yeah.
What will this do to the agreement that we just made in the past year with the county? Chief, yeah. And Larry?
They're mutually exclusive. The contract that we, we parted ways with the county on the service in the area, the county area has nothing to do with automatic aid. Automatic aid with the county, Williamson County Rescue Squad, has been, for decades, we've done it back through the eighties. And it means when they have a structure fire, we send a truck. When we have a structure fire, they send us a truck and people. When ISO came to town last year, they said, hey, it's great, you've been doing it, put it in writing, which it shouldn't be in writing. And all this does is formalize what we've been doing for years and years. There's no change in our operations, no additional costs. There's no change except that we will, we will have a contract to show ISO the next time they come to town.
Has the county signed it on their end yet?
No, they haven't met. The county attorney just got this together and, and, and sent it to me and, and I reviewed it. I don't have any reason to believe that they wouldn't pass it, but if they didn't, it just wouldn't be an agreement. What I was, had told him that when I presented it to the board, that we would, if the board passed it, we would have it executed in, in duplicate and what they would do when they pass it is execute both copies and send us back one.
My other question is, it, it, will it, will it change anything? You said no, so if there's a fire out here on county property, they're going to be the first responder, right?
Yes.
Or are we going to automatically send some? Or are we going to automatically send someone?
We will automatically send somebody with them, as we have for years.
And I'm not to dispute it, but y'all please help me. My understanding was if they requested assistance with it only, not automatically.
No, that's what automatic aid is. We go automatically.
In certain types of fires, right?
Yeah, only on structure fires.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. That's all we're talking about.
That's what I said, just on structure fires.
Okay.
And now, if they request other equipment, that's mutually. If they need a brush truck or tanker, something like that. It has nothing to do with the automatic aid. And their, their procedure that they have in the counties, they have subcommittees, they have a safety committee that's already met, already approved this contract. It will go to the full board, thirteenth I think it is. And generally, once their subcommittees have approved it, the full committee, or the full board rather, just rubber stamps.
I think that's exactly what the mayor was, was looking at, that this probably should have gone through that committee before it came to us. And she wouldn't have had to have asked to send it back. So I think that's what she was, just the same, what the county does.
Other discussion?
Do you still want it to go back or do you?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Does that negate eight C?
Yes, because we wouldn't be, I'll have to inform them that we'll have to, are you wanting this approved?
We're looking for the document to be approved by the county and sent to us for signature.
Okay.
And that way, we, we have a mutual understanding. So we're not asking them, it's something that's being written up by their attorney that they're presenting to us, signed and approved by them.
Point of order, Mayor. I only heard three votes.
I didn't get Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I happened quick before I knew it. I say yes on it to go to the committee.
I'm sorry, I heard that, but I didn't clarify.
I didn't quite know how I was going to vote. I wasn't quick enough.
Before we move forward, may I ask the chief, both chiefs, to set something up. But we've already got one thing to be presented in front of the safety committee. If we could combine those two together for one meeting as soon as possible, I would appreciate it. Commissioner Sullivan, are you on that committee also?
Yes.
So we can do that.
Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
They haven't approved the library thing, document also. Do you want to, do you want to not send that until they, until they sign it?
They prepared it, right?
The addendum, yes, they prepared it.
Okay. Item eight D, discuss and/or take action on the GHSO grant. Chief Harris?
Yes, it's time again for the governor's highway safety grant. This is our eighth year this year. It is thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. It's a non-match. Eleven thousand nine hundred is for overtime, for saturations and roadblocks. Twenty-four thousand six hundred is for equipment. And we were looking at a, one camera and we're looking for two citation systems where it's automatic when you write a citation, you just fill it in and it prints it out.
What was the money used for last year, please?
Overtime and equipment. When we do our saturations, we pay the officers overtime, the ones that work the saturations and roadblocks.
Okay, if equipment was there, do you have the inventory control report of the equipment purchased with this grant?
Not with me, but I can get it for you.
Okay, I'd like to see a copy of that because there is a requirement in here. In reading, there's a requirement, I may not be able to put my finger on it immediately, but that's one of the requirements as far as grant control?
Yes.
And any type of oversight of that? And I just wanted to see if the city does have that in record? And how many years have we received this grant?
I believe this will be our eighth, so we've had it seven years. And they come out and audit us, yes.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you know when's the last time that that grant has been audited for those, the description?
He comes out every year.
Okay, for the, it says a perpetual inventory system on all equipment purchased with the funds. And that's A through J on, I don't have a page number, I'm sorry, it's in the middle of the stack. So just curious if you have that, if you can share that and that that's always, you know, utmost when they?
Captain Sutton has that and he's the one that goes over the, oh.
What are the wishes of the board?
Why? Okay. If we were in discussion, I have discussion when you get to that point.
We have a motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, I just had a quick question. You know, we had the grant and then we also had the letter from Captain Sutton and it was talking about equipment. But what I noticed in reading this is that the price difference of, in this, in the grant, talking about the cameras for five thousand five hundred, and then in here, this quote was sixty, or six thousand five hundred and forty, is that? So I was wondering, who are we going to different? What's the difference in, versus this letter that was in, and then the grant, the prices? You understand my question?
That's down further, but, and I've got C.C. Taylor to explain why we want to stay with a certain camera because of our computer system where we download and.
Okay, so we'll, and we'll talk at that, at that point, but I was just, while we're talking about the grant, I just couldn't figure out why one camera was so much cheaper than the other, so.
It's a free one, he's saying, that may not be compatible with what?
So you're just taking what they're, free money.
They would have to change the entire program, am I correct, Chief?
Well, I'm not asking.
I'm just saying, it would be extremely expensive for us to do.
Other discussion? Just giving plenty of time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight E, discuss and/or take action on bill two thousand thirteen dash twenty-two.
Ordinance number eight seventeen is an ordinance for the amendment of the city of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen budget. Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Question. Is, would it be appropriate for us to add in at this time the change that was going to be required? Would she go?
I'm right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know you were looking for me, I'm sorry.
You were sitting over there a second ago. That we required, that would have to be?
The, the ten thousand we talked about earlier? I was going to ask Larry if we could do that because I don't know. Can we change the one that we have right now since it's, it was advertised in the?
I would say no.
The agenda that it was the two items, can we change and add that to it?
Just, just a question for convenience, yes.
Yeah, if, if we can, it would make it more streamlined.
We're still going to have it for eight oh three.
The item that they discussed earlier?
Forestation, community garden and reforestation project.
That I said we needed to vote on. Can we add that?
No, we'll have to do that in a separate budget. I'm not sure.
I think separate because it is stated as an ordinance eight seventeen of specifics. I agree. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item eight F, discuss and/or take action on city engineer job description and pay grade. City Manager Hyatt?
Mayor, I put this out before you just to get some feedback to see actually if you wanted to go this direction or just hire back at the same level that Kevin is with the director's position. We pay, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for engineering services this year and we wanted to just see how you want it to go, if this is something you wanted to pursue further, or if you wanted to just leave it as is.
I make a motion that we advertise for city engineer.
Second. Discussion?
Mayor, I, I think there is a couple of things here that, that are ongoing. I think that there are a lot of things that by looking at, at combining the position that Kevin is leaving and getting a new city engineer, I think there's cost savings that we could generate to where we only had to use our Grigson Maloney on certain things and most of it could be done in-house. I also think there is, for lack of a better term, a, an expeditious factor that allows us, because it's all internal to, on things that we get, we really want to move on, we're able to do that at a faster pace because it's all controlled by staff and it's not having to work it in and get somebody else and things like that nature. I also think that by going on out and, and putting the job out there, that doesn't necessarily mean that if we don't get the kind of candidate that we want or, or whatever happens in the near future, that we couldn't just not fill the job if we don't want to. All we're doing is really getting a good jump on what may be available to us as an option. And I don't see any real downside to that other than advertising. And I assume we would advertise in the newspaper and that we would advertise on them tasks. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
My question there would be, are we creating a new job and keeping the community service director job, the public works director job, and the public work superintendent job, are all of those on the payroll as well as this is added to the payroll?
No, you're replacing the, the community services director position with this. It's just a, an upgrade to that position. We'd still keep the park superintendent, we'd have a community services supervisor and then a city engineer. So it's really just filling a vacancy, not creating a new job.
Okay, thank you. Under general summary, is that under broad or under board? Okay. It had all the same letters.
Got you, I got you.
See. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight G, discuss and/or take action on authorization to purchase in-car camera system. Chief Harris?
Yes, we would like to ask the board so we don't have to bid out the cameras and I'm going to let C.C. explain why.
We want to sole source the cameras. I'm sorry, we want to sole source the cameras because we already have the infrastructure for the current camera system that we're asking for, meaning that we already have the software and we already have the server in place. By bidding out and possibly going with another camera system would mean that we would have to pay for a new server and new software, new wiring, the entire system, infrastructure would have to be redone because these systems are not compatible with each other. Each camera system is proprietary with their software. And so to save that money of the infrastructure, we want to be able to sole source and go strictly with the system that we already have in place, which is the arbitrator system.
Question on it. If we stay with the one we have now, and just my understanding, you can please clarify for me, that the agreement that we have now, the infrastructure, the training that we have available through what we have now, will be good for another seven years?
Correct, because we only put that system in this last year. So the training for the installation, the training for installing the cameras into the car along with the software will last for several, several years.
And the new ones that'll be coming out, because this, this will be discontinued, but we will still have everything for seven years, am I correct?
Correct.
And then you ones will, will be different, we would have to replace the entire system in order to have a joint system.
No, the new cameras that are coming out are still compatible with our current software and server. It's just a new model camera.
Okay, that's all I can?
Chief Harris, what are these cameras for? Please clarify.
Cameras are in the vehicles, they keep us out of lawsuits. For every stop, every time you turn your blue lights on, the cameras come on.
So are they currently in the cars now?
Yes, ma'am.
And you will be replacing these or these are being purchased for other vehicles?
The new cars, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
These prices, do they include the, I know you said software, you already have the software, but as it includes like the laptops, the wiring, you mentioned wiring, is that all included? Like for your?
Laptops are different, yes.
Okay, so you're not going to have to?
Yeah, this is just the camera system.
And the wiring and the software, okay.
Right, all, all the computer infrastructure is currently in place.
Okay.
The wireless downloads, all the wiring to the server, all of that is already there.
I'm not real sure how we can discuss or appease the request. Our ordinance number five fourteen speaks of no purchase or contract shall be executed on the behalf of the city of Fairview wherein the aggregate amount of the purchase or contract exceeds ten thousand and the twelve times the sixty-four, sixty-five forty is a seventy-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollar purchase. I don't see how we cannot go to bid with an ordinance to follow.
The only way you can do a sole source bid is upon written recommendation of the city manager detailing why and the board has to approve it by resolution.
So is that to be done prior to this request on the agenda tonight?
It would have to be done before you could vote on it.
I make a motion for deferment until it's presented properly. Second. Any discussion?
Chief, is, what's the timeframe on this?
We don't have the cars yet.
I know, but I'm just, they, they will dissolve the making, they're getting correct me if I'm wrong, of this particular model shortly, am I correct or wrong?
The prices are going to go, are supposed to go up the same.
Yes, and I'm.
Do we know how much?
I believe it was like nine hundred dollars.
Per unit?
Yes.
And I want to say it was thirty, just sixty.
Thirty days to sixty somewhere. We can get this back as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, C.C. Item eight H?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could I interrupt just a second? Could I make a motion that we suspend the agenda for a moment to allow the city manager to make his comments before we move on to item H?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
There comes a time when you, when you have to write a new chapter in your life and the lives of those around you. And it, it, it's with some mixed feelings, but I'm, I'm tendering my resignation tonight effective to close the business on October eighteenth, two thousand thirteen.
If there are no comments from the board, then I would make a motion that we return to the agenda items.
Agenda item H? Commissioner Sutton?
It's to discuss or take action on future employment and replacement for city manager. And my question is, since this is a short notice thing, this just basically came up, I'd like to ask for any suggestions for replacement for the city manager.
I make a motion to hire Wayne Hall to that position.
I can second that for discussion.
Discussion?
I don't know that about y'all, but I'm just taking in our city managers leaving. I don't know that I'm prepared to decide right now what the replacement is or if we've decided yet, I'm ready to decide if we don't want to have some kind of discussion of do we want to speak with the city manager, see if this is, he's already taken the position and gone or if we want to do something else before we throw people in of who's going to replace them.
Have you already taken the position?
Yes, I have.
So you have, he has a contract at this time, I believe.
You've already signed a contract with somebody else?
Yes, I've signed a contract.
Okay. I make a motion that we have a meeting to review options of what to do to just pick a interim until we get through the process of what we're going to do with the city manager's position.
Here we have a motion on the floor.
Did you amend the motion?
I'd like to amend the motion that we go through the process of. I'd like to amend the motion that we go through the process of either where we discuss...
We have a, we have an amended motion? Is there a second? A second for discussion? Discussion on the amendment? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to offer if the, my fellow commissioners would be willing to withdraw their motion, that the motion actually be that we move to executive session at this particular times and have a discussion amongst ourselves about what we want to do with this and then come back and open it back up and proceed. But y'all would have to take your motions off the floor for us to be able to do that.
I'll move my motion for that as well.
Are we permissive to do executive without notice?
If the board approves it, because you can, you can have things that come up during the board meeting that necessitates that.
Okay. We have a withdrawal of the first and second motion of the original motion. We have withdrawal of the amendment?
Yes.
A withdrawal, my second. We have a motion for an executive session. Is that moved? Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have executive session. And I am reopening the regular meeting. We had item eight H, discuss and/or take action on future city commis, city manager position. What are the wishes of the board?
Mayor, could I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be rather lengthy, so I apologize, but I'd like to make a motion that the current city manager be placed on administrative leave through the eighteenth, I believe, Mr. Hyatt, that was the date that you said, with full pay and benefits to that point in time. And then the normal process for employee leaving will take effect. In the beginning, effective immediately until further notice, I would like to make a motion that the acting city manager be, the chief financial officer, Ms. Puet, and that she will serve in that capacity until another interim city manager or a permanent city manager is selected, and that we call a special meeting on Monday for, to, for the board to interview and then make a decision on Commissioner Johnson's previous nomination of Mr. Hall for the city manager's job.
What time's the meeting?
Uh, I'm open on Monday. Mr. Hall, what time would you be available Monday at any time to meet with the five of us? Okay, I would suggest that we would meet in the morning at ten.
Uh, it would be in the afternoon would be better for me.
Sir?
Four. Four would be fine.
Four, four. What's...
Six.
We have a part, a part board meeting.
Well, we need for all five of us to be there, what, what...
What time's the park board meeting?
Six.
Five. Five, then?
You meet at five? What time do you get off for?
Well, I have a split shift, but I don't get off until six, so I normally come to the park board meetings late.
What about noon?
I got plans that day. I do, I work nights.
Tuesday the eighth. I'm just saying in suggestion to see her schedule on Tuesday the eighth.
Free on Tuesday. Want to do a round lunch? Let me check, double check, I've got eight.
I mean, I, y'all know my status, I'm free.
Sound, sound, ma'am, I can take off.
So Tuesday at eight, Tuesday at noon?
Tuesday the eighth?
Tuesday, um, yeah, that's fine.
Tuesday noon at eight o'clock. Would that work with you, Mr. Hall, to interview with?
Right, not at eight o'clock, noon. Tuesday the eighth.
Yeah, Tuesday the eighth at noon.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, that's my motion. Do I need to restate all of that again?
I'll second.
She got it, she got it.
We have a first and a second discussion here at City Hall.
Yes, here at City Hall in this chamber.
One more piece of discussion, do we need to run this by her? I think so. Can you step up for just a second?
Well, if we don't give her an option, she can't say no.
Which is much more positive. Are you willing to do that for us?
Um, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Talonino.
We have first and second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I vote nay. We have three yeas, two nays. Moving on to item nine A, city manager items for discussion.
No further comments tonight, ma'am.
Staff comments this evening?
First meeting. Uh, we had seven hundred twenty-seven calls last month and eighteen accidents, but we've also had a little rash of break-ins and the citizens would be aware of ones that are home during the day, their neighbors, give us the call, we'll be there, but they upset me when we had break-ins and they've hit Fairview and the county. So if everybody kind of look after each other and just give us call for any suspicious vehicle, person, or whatever. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work and the looking for Ms. Carter. I appreciate all your dedication, everyone who was involved.
Thank you.
Other staff comments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, you have a copy of my report.
Is your mic on, Mr. Levon?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, the planning department, we re, have reviewed the preliminary site plan, the final site plan, and the architectural design review for Taco Bell, and will recommend approval to the planning commission at their next meeting. Building permit department has issued five building permits for the month of September. Total construction cost for those permits was three hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Issued twenty-four electrical permits. Complaint department received three complaints, we forward those to the appropriate department for resolution. Built twelve calls for service-related orders, report them to the property department for work to be completed. Building codes department reviewed, didn't review any commercial building plans, completed thirty-two building inspections and issued five certificates of occupancy. Codes violation department received eight complaints for the month of September. There were thirty-six violation letters sent out and two letters of failure to comply sent out.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Other staff comments this evening? City attorney comment? Oh, I'm so sorry.
I got such a hurry last month about telling you about the records, that the clinic being closed, to go get your records, I forgot to tell you how many calls we answered last month, sixty-four. And we did seventy-nine just this past month. We have a vacancy for firefighter, there was a typo in the newspaper, said it closed October first, it actually was the eleventh, so we're gonna re-advertise for another three weeks to be, to be fair, because it went out on all the Google Net and everything else like that, it was the eleventh, which was the correct date. So taking advantage of our TV broadcast here, our applications will now close the twenty-fifth at close of business, and we'll send that out tomorrow. I'd like to thank Kevin for your service. Kevin went to the second best college in the United States, Texas A&amp;M, and we'll miss him, he helped the fire department tremendously. And also Mr. Hyatt for your service, ever I came to him, he always had an instant cure for whatever my ails were, and we thank you for your four years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to request a workshop for one day next week. City manager and I had met with Benefits, Inc., because it's time to renew our insurance, and he asked that we request a workshop for one day next week. The only day he can't do is Wednesday, because he wanted to go over some of the plans, plan options with you guys.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Have a time on...
Tuesday at one-thirty.
I was gonna say Tuesday at one-thirty.
I'll call him, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm gonna sharpen this pencil. Other staff comments this evening? City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make mine shorter, I know the hour's late, but I have one item of information for the board. I have received the legal action, the lawsuit from the county tax collector who also collects Fairview's taxes. Doesn't require any, anything for, on behalf of the city in response. We're enlisted on there because we have taxes that are owed to us for the property up on Lake Road, and I just wanted to let, make the board aware that that's out there, and as I said, it doesn't require us to do anything. I would like to say thanks, thanks to the city manager for, he's been easy for me to work for. He was especially gracious to me when I had the misfortune of breaking my ankle. For some six weeks, he picked me up at my office and set me off at my back door at the house when I was really having some times, tough times, physically driving the automobile. And I appreciate that, and just want to say thanks to him, and we'll miss you.
Communications from the Commissioners, Commissioner Bissell?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate city manager Hyatt on his new position. I think we have been very fortunate to have Andrew serve as our city manager for the last four years. I think that many of the ideas that we had as a board, Andrew may happen for us, and in addition to that, he probably added three or four of his own in there. And as you drive down, down our main drag, this is a lot different place than it was four years ago, and I think we owe him a debt of gratitude for that. I wish for him and his family the very best that life has to offer, and I'm sure that East Ridge, Tennessee doesn't yet know what a good deal they're getting. So Andrew, thank you very much. I'd also like to offer my thanks to Kevin. Kevin blessed us with a Fairview child that will always be a citizen of Fairview, having been born here. Be sure that they know that. But in many of the things that we wanted to get accomplished over the last year, Kevin was our point person, and they all turned out very successfully, and he did a lot too in his short time here to make a mark on Fairview, and he too will be sorely missed. I hate that he and Andrew are leaving at the same time, it would've been nice if they had coordinated it better. But being as it is, we, Kevin, we do appreciate the work that you've done, we recognize it, and we thank you for your service to our city. While I'm thanking people, I, I think the signs look great. Now we have our third sign and the one at Bowie Park that somewhat matches it, and I think all of the signs worked, worked great, and that was basically done by our internal folks, and I won't try to list them, because if I did, I would forget one of them, but they really did a nice job with that, and I hope y'all are as proud of them as, as I am. And last, if you didn't have a chance to, to come out, and I know it was mainly an event for children, but I saw a lot of adults out there having a good time, and that was at our fun day in the park last Saturday. We have, my estimate said about seven hundred, if you talk to Jenny, she's gonna tell you more like nine hundred, but we had kids everywhere. And Randy Beck ran some of the greatest hay rides, he drove all day long out there. But it was a, we, it was our second year, it was much better than the first year, weather, everything. It was a county fair without all the glitz. All the games were manual, and the kids just loved it. The prizes were candy and, and spider rings and little, little things like that, there were no, no, and it was just, it was, not only was it great to see so many people turn out and the weather be so nice, it was great to see that many happy faces. And so I'd like to commend Keith and Jenny, Nancy, those folks that really put that together, and the cooperation from the teachers, the volunteers, everybody that participated on that. Next year, when they do it, you really ought to come out and see it, even if you're not a kid at heart, because they, they did a fabulous job, and, and so my, my commendations to them. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McHale?
Um, of course, I think we may sound like a broken record tonight, but I do have to say the same. First, I'll start with Kevin, thank you for your service in getting some of those projects done, it's just kind of lingered. And then Mr. Hyatt, you know, you're gonna be missed, and I appreciate everything that you've done for the city and your diligence and just working hard for the citizens and then trying to please Commissioner Five. I, I don't know how you do it, I've said that before. So I just wish you luck, your family luck, and, you know, I, I can only, believe it or not, I don't have words, just know that y'all are my thoughts and prayers, and best wishes to you, and very sorry for us, but things change happen, I guess we'll adjust, and we'll, we'll be fine, and I know you left us in good hands.
Commissioner Sutton?
I just echo it again, Kevin. Andrew, I appreciate all the work that you've done. I fully understand and agree with you, your first responsibilities are to your family. Matter of fact, y'all could leave your family here and go about your own business if you want to, because they're, they're great people, and enjoy being associated with them, and your wife has done a lot of good work here. I know that you're, that's probably the hardest decision you had to make was about picking up and moving, so I appreciate you having to make that tough decision for your family, because that, that is what's most important, and I agree with both of you completely, and wish you the best of luck in. And moving on to one other thing of business important, is there's a barbecue and chicken dinner at the Masonic Lodge Friday, Saturday, the fifth, from twelve to five, come on out. Got all the fixings, it's ten dollars for adults, five dollars for children, and as you all know, going through the Masonic Lodge, it, it all goes out to some great charities, including Shriners Hospital Burn Clinic for Children. Once again, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, been good knowing you. For those that don't know, he lives next door to my parents in McCormick Grove, so I've known him before he took this position. Glad you did, wish we weren't losing you, but completely understand what's, what's going on. Thank you for your service. Mr. Hyatt, I'm proud to be one that set up here and voted to hire you. I hoping the, the next one we have the opportunity to, to vote for, for your position, will do as good or better than you, to keep, keep going what you've done. Like Alan said, the last four years, there've been some major changes here, and it's all been for the good. Thank you very much for your service. Crystal, thank you for stepping up and agreeing to do this for as long as it takes. And Mr. Hall, thank you for agreeing to come to the interview on Tuesday, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to share my sentiments exactly. Kevin, the first thing I said to you is help us get some things accomplished, and you stepped up to the task, and I greatly appreciate that and your commitment to the city, even though it wasn't your city, you called it yours, and I appreciate that. The rest of the staff, I want to make comments because I believe that you have showed gallant growth, and I think we have pulled together and made a city better with the leadership of... of Mr. Hyatt, and I do want to thank you for holding the staff accountable and being able to show that the city is moving in a positive direction and that we are looking for change, and that is what you're experiencing now. And I do ask for blessings on you and your family as you move into the next chapter of life, and I just encourage all of the staff to continue doing the great job they have done, and I appreciate the diligent conversation that the board was able to have in our executive and the time that it took us to just look at the process and look at the due diligence for the betterment of the city, and as we sit here, we try to make the best decisions for the whole. And I'll ask for a motion for adjournment, please. All those in favor? Good evening.